Good morning and welcome. I'm Arastelli Cruz, Calbright's marketing manager. Today, I'd like to welcome you to our Board of Trustees meeting on June 17, 2020. Please follow along with our agenda on Board Docs. You can find the link on our website, calbright.org, under About, Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comments, please use the Q&amp;A feature in Zoom to request to address the board for three minutes, or if you're joined by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand. You will be unmuted and called upon at the appropriate time. Public comments should be pertaining to today's agenda. If you have any other questions, please direct them to our Communications Director, Taylor Huckabee, by emailing taylor@calbright.org. A reminder, this board meeting is being recorded, and with that, I'd like to introduce our Board President, Tom Epstein.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the board meeting. First, we'll start by calling the roll.
Hildegard Aguinaldo. I see her. Amy Costa.
Here.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Julina Grande.
Here.
Pam Haines.
Here.
Bill Rawlings. Alma Salazar.
Okay, we have a quorum. I don't think we need to discuss the order of the agenda. Oh, we do the pledge allegiance. So, let's see. How about, member Grande, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I take it we have a flag for which we are observing. If you'll place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. So, next up is the Board President's report, and I, first of all, want to hope everyone who is in earshot of this meeting is doing well, as well as can be expected under the circumstances. And first, I want to start with a little good news. Either late yesterday or early this morning, the U.S. District Court in San Francisco ruled in favor of the California Community Colleges lawsuit in Oakley versus DeVos. They granted a preliminary injunction that will allow colleges to immediately distribute funds to veterans, those who never signed up for the FAFSA, and undocumented students immediately. We expect the Department of Education to seek a stay, which we will, of course, vigorously advocate to be denied, and meanwhile, the colleges have the opportunity to start distributing money. So, that's really good news. I also want to announce that the hiring process for the permanent CEO is nearly complete, and the candidate will be considered at the full board meeting in July. The, of course, the budget is top of mind, and we are really hopeful that, in the end, the legislature and governor will agree to fund Calbright at a reasonable level. And I think, as we all know, that Calbright is crucial in the time of COVID, that both for their distance ed capability and the ability to innovate on behalf of all the community colleges to help them with online learning. Also, convenient job skills education, which is especially important for low-income people of color, can help address some of the concerns of the protesters that are on the streets of California today. And so, we encourage everyone who is a supporter of Calbright to please speak out as quickly and strongly as possible to key legislators and to the governor's office. And finally, I want to talk about the events of this spring that have really changed much in our state. We recognize that many of our staff and students may be suffering trauma, not just from the virus and the social and financial impact of the virus, and also the horrific incidence of racial violence that have shocked the whole world. At Calbright, I know the team is doing everything we can to provide support and comfort to the staff and students and faculty that we serve. And we vow to be part of the solution as California confronts these unprecedented health and economic catastrophes, as well as the structural racism that, for far too long, has endangered the lives and denied opportunities for people of color in this country.
Thank you, Tom.
Go ahead. It's you, Tom.
So, thank you, President Epstein and Vice President Haines. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. The last several weeks, as Tom mentioned, has been challenging for our college and also for our country. And like many other education institutions, we're operating with a high degree of uncertainty around the future that we face. We are grappling with the ways in which our college that is really designed for equity can process the trauma, the racism, the hurt around the senseless killing of George Floyd, but really also to channel that outrage into a constructive fight to dismantle the systemic racism and the structures and the policies and in the business processes that, especially in conventional education, perpetuate, can perpetuate inequity. As an institution, as President Epstein mentioned, we are very focused on supporting our team members to ensure that they can continue to care for our students. We've brought in specifically grief counseling, access to employee assistance, and a renewed internal focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Along with a number of other community colleges in the system, we've also joined the California Community College Equity Leadership Alliance that is supported by USC's Center on Race and Equity to further give us strategies to strengthen our efforts. There is much more work to be done, and I think in the aftermath of a tragedy like this, it becomes really an inflection point for our efforts. This event, our fight through this global pandemic and its disproportionate impact on Black and Brown communities, and really the threat of deeper economic loss from a divided economic recovery, has really renewed our resolve to redouble the team's efforts to support current students, as well as to ready ourselves for new enrollments over the next several weeks. Despite the heaviness of the moment, the Calbright team is forging ahead. I just wanted to take this opportunity to let the board know just how proud I am of the dedicated and hardworking staff and faculty that we have on our team. They, as they're readying for new enrollments, we have updated the design of our Essentials course. We've implemented critical improvements to the student portal and designed new interventions for student success at key points in the student journey that support progression for our students. We are also continuing our engagement with employers for current students and have really used this understanding and this time to help inform the design of a new course module on workforce readiness that is on the agenda for this meeting. I'm also very happy to report our faculty search committees are interviewing candidates, and we're on track to present the board with our first full-time faculty hires for approval at the July meeting. We are, as President Epstein mentioned, actively monitoring and engaging the current budget process, and we hope that, for our college and for all of the social safety net programs that many of our students rely on, that an agreement is reached that allows Calbright to really fulfill its mission to contribute to addressing the unprecedented challenges that are facing workers, whether they're unemployed, at risk of economic dislocation, or seeing a reduction in their wages and work hours. With this ambiguity of our future laid to rest, I'm hopeful that we will be able to much more aggressively recruit and hire the additional staff we need, the additional faculty and administrators we need to grow the development of the college and to scale its efforts, including the launch of new program pathways in the coming weeks and months. So, I'll stop there, and thank you once again for all of the board's support, and a special thank you for the team at Calbright, who is nothing short of heroic in my eyes.
Thank you. Are there any public comments at this moment?
No, there's no public comments.
Okay. Then, let's move on to the consent agenda. Does any, do any members of the board want to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I do want to remove item 2.3 from the consent agenda, and it's without prejudice to the merits of the agenda item, but given the dollar amount, I feel like it should be an action agenda item.
Okay. Anything else need to... Okay, then, we can take a motion to approve items 2.1, 2.2, 2.4, 2.5, and 2.6. Do we have a motion?
No motion. This is Hilde.
I will second that motion. This is Grande.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? Okay, please call the roll.
No, I don't have any public comments.
Okay.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Julina Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haines.
Is that everyone? Okay. So, let's now go to item 2.3. So, CFO, Mr. Schweitzer, will you explain that one for us?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, President Tal Walker Menon, Board President Epstein, Vice President Haines, and Board Members. Nick Schweitzer, the Chief Financial Administrative Officer of Calbright. Today, I'm asking you to approve a $3.6 million increase in our Foundation Administrative Services Agreement. Since the inception of Calbright, Foundation has provided critical back-office functions, including employer of record for our college personnel. The Administrative Services Agreement is projected to reach our current approved amount by the end of June, so we're asking for the $3.6 million in additional authority that should last at least through September, but probably longer because we are currently working to stand up all of our own fiscal procurement, human resources, and payrolls functions. We'll be implementing our own payroll and retirement benefit reporting as of July 1, so that will shift a lot of the costs out of the Administrative Services Agreement at that time. However, we're going to continue to have incurred costs through that agreement as we're still working on setting up our own fiscal procurement and human resources systems. As the board is aware, we approved a contract with the Enterprise Resource Planning System that we're going to begin implementing just here in the next month or so, and that will not be completed until 2021. So, over the course of the next few months, we will be continuing to trend, shift functions from the foundation to our own staff and our own systems. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any board member questions? Okay, any public comment?
No, I don't have any public comments.
Okay, then, please call the roll. All right, no, sorry. We need a motion and a second.
Item, Tom. Costa.
I'll second. This is Grande.
Okay, please call the roll.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Julina Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haines.
You're muted. I think she's, I think she's saying hi.
Hi.
I got it. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Sure. And before we go on, could you, I hope somebody's reaching out to members Rawlings and Salazar to make sure they're...
Are, yes.
They've got all the dial-in information. Okay, moving on to the action agenda. Item 3.1, non-credit course outline of record for review and approval.
Good morning, President Menon, President Epstein, and Vice President Haines. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name is Pam Samborn, and I am the Acting Chief Learning Officer and Dean of Allied Health. I'm here today to present a new non-credit course outline of record and DE addendum to the board for approval. The number and name of the proposed course is WF550, Industry Training and Work Experience. I would first like to begin by speaking about our current programs and then discuss the rationale for this new course. Currently, we have three programs: medical coding, IT support, IT cybersecurity. Each program is made up of two courses, the first being College and Career Essentials course, and the second being the Program of Study course. Upon completion of these two courses, students will receive a certificate of competency from the college. They then will go on to prepare and take the exam for their industry credential. At this point, some of our graduates will elect to go right into employment. However, others may feel that they need more support before making that transition. That is where WF550 comes in. The need to create an additional course was based on conversations that we had with our students and employers who felt that some new graduates needed additional help to become job-ready. WF550 is a combination of workforce readiness preparation, including job-seeking application, resume, and interview coaching, along with opportunities for virtual or remote experiential learning, all designed to help our graduates become comfortable and confident to move into employment. I thank you again for allowing me to present today, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board?
President Epstein, may I?
Sure.
If possible, could you maybe draw out or describe where this class specifically fits in terms of a trajectory for an incoming new student, one who hasn't done the Essentials course or anything? Where does this class fit in that trajectory?
So, this class does not fit for an incoming student unless they have, at another community college, received, or some outside entity, received the credentials for, you know, AAIPC, Certified Professional Coder. They could possibly come right into this course, but anybody who is new to the college or new to these programs would go through that pathway first before they would get to this course.
Is there a particular reason why they need to be through a program pathway in order to be eligible to take this class? What is specific about this class that requires that prerequisite knowledge?
So, this class is designed to help them with employment. The remote and the virtual experiences will require that they have the knowledge from the theory courses and the training that they've received in their course of study, or program of study. And so, somebody who doesn't have that knowledge would not be able to effectively participate in any of that training.
Pam, could you also please clarify that, my understanding is this is not necessarily also a prerequisite, but it's optional sequencing of the course?
Yes, absolutely. This is optional. So, all students do not have to go through it. It is not going to prolong their time at Calbright. It's simply an elective at the end, after they have already finished everything, if they needed that extra support. They wanted more time before they went into employment. They felt that they needed more confidence in their skills, or just the ability to articulate their skills that they have learned at Calbright. So, we just want to have that opportunity for them to still have contact with their instructors and to the supports that we have at Calbright to make sure that they are ready to go before they go into employment.
Thank you very much. One last question. I noticed that at the end of the COR, it is signed off by Technical Review and the Committee Chair of Curriculum, but not a Department Chair or faculty member. Is there a reason why that signature has been omitted?
There is no reason that signature has been omitted except for the timeline of getting it to the board. So, on the signature, if you look at the DE addendum, it is signed off by Lena Herr, and Lena Herr would have been the Department Chair who signed off on this as well. And we just didn't, I just didn't have time to get her signature prior to getting it into the board on time.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Member Costa.
Yeah, hi. Thank you so much for presenting this item. I have a couple of questions. I kind of need you to educate me because it's not what we do on the bog. Under your student learning outcomes, I, number one is identify 21st century work skills and their application in the workforce, and kind of like, as a broad concept, I get that, but I'm wondering if you can provide some more specific examples in this industry, what that would entail. And then, under the resources, electronic and physical, you look employer-related. I'm wondering if you could give a little bit more specifics on that as well.
Yes. So, the 21st century skills, they're called different things. 21st century skills are soft skills. And the Essentials course, while they're going through the Essentials course, they're honing in on those skills and really mastering some of the soft skills. But when it comes to, you know, being employer-ready, it's, they don't always make that connection that I have this ability, that, you know, I've mastered time management, and I've mastered ethical behavior, and I mastered all of this. So, when they get into this course here, if they elect to take it, we want them to really think about all of those 21st century skills that they do possess. It could be that they put it on their resume. More importantly, I think it would be in the interview process, that they're, that they're able to really speak of those things. And so, again, we wanted that opportunity. And then, did that answer that question before I move on to the other one? Okay. And then, the other one was, I believe resources, you said? Oh, employer-related training resources. So, when we're doing our remote and virtual experiences, there may be additional materials that the employers provide to us, or the institutes to which they're doing the virtual training. And so, we just wanted to include that because we may have additional resources that we give them to be able to be effective in those experiences, in those work experiences.
Anyone else? So, I have a question. Those soft skills that you mentioned, are they included at all in the, in the first basic course that's, all the students are taking?
Yes, the soft skills are included and the Essentials course. And when they get into WF550, it's more about, you know, taking it to the next level. You know, when you're trying to master anything, you know, there's steps that happen, and more learning that has happened. And when they're focusing on those 21st century skills in the beginning and as they're going through their pathway, they don't have that industry knowledge yet. They get that as they go through our program pathways. And so, when they get into, if they choose, again, to take WF550, they're really able to focus and think back on what they learned and the program context, and then how they would really apply that to the workforce when they start working on the job.
And I don't recall, when reading the material, how many hours or, you know, how much, what is the time commitment to complete this course?
So, we have 10 content hours, which would be, including like the resume prep and all of that, the coaching part of it. So, 10 content hours. And then, we have 60 experiential learning hours. And we picked 60 because when we transition into offering credit courses after we have accreditation, then it's in line with workforce experience, or work experience courses. That 60 hours of non-paid time equals one unit. So, we were just trying to think ahead for that, so there wouldn't be such a transition when we do go into offer credit courses.
And you say that it's voluntary, but are students being strongly encouraged to take it? How is it being presented to them?
Well, right now, since it's not approved, we haven't done that yet. But our plan is, we have several contacts throughout with our students. We're working with our partnerships teams to even, make even more contacts with the students, with employers. But currently, we have our faculty that are reaching out to our students, doing webinars and information sessions with students, all the way from the Essentials and into their core programs. And so, we would incorporate it in there. Once the course is approved, we would make sure that they are aware of it and that they have the opportunity to take that opportunity if they would like. And so, I imagine it would be academic advisors as well. That would be counseling students that this is another option that they have as well.
Well, I guess I'm not against this, but I am concerned that people who sign up for Calbright and think they're going to get into a medical coding program or one of the other programs are first presented with this Essentials course, then they take, you know, the substantive course, and then they're presented with this. And I just want to make sure this is in any way an impediment to their, you know, expeditious completion of their studies and into the workforce. And I'm just, I'm a little concerned about the rate of progress that we've had so far through the Essentials, and I certainly wouldn't want this to become any kind of roadblock, you know, or, you know, presented to the student as something they really should do if they really don't want to.
Yeah, absolutely. And we feel the exact same way as what you expressed. So, we would never, we would never do that, to put in any roadblock that prevents them. Our students, as they're going through the program, as I said, when they finish, they get to sit for that industry credential. That alone can get them into employment. This is just in case they, you know, they feel they want more support. They feel they want to, you know, work on these skills a little bit more. It's an option for them to do that, and definitely not a roadblock. And it would not be on their academic plan unless they specified they wanted to do it. It would not be automatically put, like you have to do this, and then this, and then this, at all.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, can I ask a follow-up question?
Certainly.
I'm looking over at the DE addendum, and I'm anticipating that this work experience class is much like other work experience classes that I'm familiar with on the credit side. And I noticed that when there's a section for providing any sort of information about in-person contact, it's completely blank. Would it not be appropriate to populate the other section on this area to indicate to the student that they're expected to be at a workplace or at a work site, so that they understand that this is not 100% online? There is a face-to-face component, but it may not necessarily be directly with a faculty member all the time, but it would be with a preceptor or another designee who's been authorized to provide this work experience or the experiential learning?
So, so, current, thank you for pointing that out, but currently, this course is totally online. It is not, and they will not be going out to the facilities, and it won't be an internship or externship at a facility where they have to leave their house to go. It will be online, virtual, remote, experiential learning. And does that answer your question, or your concern?
Well, the reason why I was asking it is because you referenced it back on the credit side after accreditation and being in alignment with current work experience requirements for the 60 hours of volunteer work. And that actually requires 60 hours at a place of employment. So, it made it seem like almost contradictory. It's like, we want it to be a work experience class in the future, so we're going to call it work experience right now and set it up like work experience right now, but it's really not a work experience class.
Yeah, we just, you know, we modeled the hours after that, but before we go into it being for credit and work experience, there's a lot of rules and regulations that go along with those courses. So, this would have to be resubmitted, you know, in that, with all of those guidelines attached, before it would turn into the for-credit. with all of those guidelines attached before it would turn into the for-credit work experience course. We were just, the hours is what I was talking about that we were modeling it after.
In order to make it seem more distinct from a work experience class, is there any possibility of re-titling it so work experience is omitted from the title?
Um, we could, yeah, we could do that. The work experience that we're talking about is that virtual and experiential learning piece of it. And so, yes, we could, we could retire, title it if the board felt that was necessary.
The only reason why I query it is there's been a lot of criticism of late about duplicity and whether or not this is something that is very similar to what's already being offered. And when we give it a title like work experience, the first thing that people will default to is it doesn't look like the typical work experience class. Therefore, is it potentially misleading a learner who may have had a work experience type class on the credit side into thinking that this was very similar to it, especially because of the structure that you described?
This is Pam, can I?
Sure.
So maybe one of the things that can happen, because I really get the point that Jalina's trying to make, when we use the same terms, but we're sort of creating a different definition. And maybe in that space, we can, we could clarify the distinctions. What kinds of, if you, what kinds of experiences that would lend themselves to an experience relative, one that's virtual? So if, if the goal of work experience is to do 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in a, in a, on, on property physically, then what is, what is this work experience, call it something else, trying to do to add value to that particular adult learner that sort of gives them a step up relative to going beyond just the, 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 the substance or the curriculum that, that has been designed? What, what are the, what are the experiential learning that can be done virtually that will help them in a work experience once they get it?
Yeah. So I, so I can speak to that. So for example, for the medical coding program, the experiential part is that they will do what is called practicoat through AAPC. So it's the credential that they will receive as a certified professional coder. And when they receive the credential after going through the program, after going through any program, there's an A that's attached to your certification because you, you don't, you don't have the industry experience yet. After two years of industry experience, they remove that A and you have a full credential of a CPC. So for our medical coding students who, who elect to do this and go through the practicoat section, they code 600 real cases and it counts for one year of experience. And because we are also using that curriculum as well, they already got credit for one year of experience. So when they get done with this part with the 600 cases, they will actually be able to have AAPC remove that A off of their credential. So then they can go right into it. A student in the medical coding program or a graduate from the medical coding program may decide, I don't want to do that. I'd rather get my experience by, just by working. And they have that option of just getting a job. And then in the two years, their employer would submit a letter saying that they have two years experience and the same thing would happen. So it's just an option. And it's a, and it's a different opportunity as well, being that it's remote and, and they do it.
Explaining it that way to the, to the learner so that they know that there's a step that they're taking that will help them relative to a job that's, that's, that's sort of added, that's additive. And then, and then it clarifies that it's, it's, it's being done virtually and not.
Yes.
And, and that's the kind of work that can be done virtually. That's the kind of experience that you can get virtually as opposed to with the employer. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So any other comments from the board? Any public comments?
No, there's no public comment.
Okay. Member Grande, do you want to make a motion that may or may not be identical to the recommendation of the staff?
It would move that we approve the course outline of record and DE addendum on this particular course. If we have to do it as two separate motions, as a curriculum committee would typically do it, I'm okay for that, but I think we can do it in tandem, that we remove the word work from the title and substitute experiential or just remove the word work. Either way, so that it's not confusing for a potential candidate, understanding that work experience already has a defined protocol within our Title V guideline. So I move approval of the course outline of record for this class, along with the DE addendum, provided that we remove the word work from the title.
I'll, I'll second that motion. Pam Haynes.
Okay. We can call a roll.
Okay. Hilda Cardagun Aldo?
Hi.
Amy Costa?
Hi.
Tom Epstein?
Hi.
Jalina Grande?
Hi.
Pam Haynes?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, item 3.2, the purchasing card program.
Thank you, Nick Schweitzer. Again, we're requesting approval of resolution 2020-02 to establish CalBright's purchasing card program. CalBright's currently using Foundation for California Community Colleges purchasing cards for business needs. You know, obviously we need to shift from using those and, and start using our own cards as far as standing up the college and moving away from that administrative services agreement we talked about earlier. So the, the purchasing cards are basically credit cards are commercial bank tool used to pay or purchase goods and services. They're particularly useful for smaller purchases and purchase as there need to be done quickly and, and, you know, efficiently and effectively. Generally reduces paperwork and allows us to have quick access to goods when we, when, when we need them. The, the card program that we're establishing will be managed by our, our finance department in accordance to purchasing policies and procedures. The distribution of the cards will be very limited and use will be restricted to minor travel and office purchases. We will probably have a card held centrally in finance for more significant purchases and expenses and, and also probably one held by our IT department for equipment purchasing there. We're currently working on a user manual that will detail the allowable uses and procedures for the cards and will be providing training for everyone who has provided a card to ensure they are knowledgeable of, you know, policies around appropriate use of the cards. And of course, in the finance department, we will be monitoring use of the cards very closely so that we can provide any corrective action very quickly in case it's, it's needed for folks that may be less familiar with public agency procurement requirements or, or expense reimburse, expense reimbursement limitations. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Member Costa?
So I'm glad to hear that you guys plan to limit the use because clearly it's, it's necessary administratively, but also this is an area that I think needs to be monitored and there need to be really clear procedures and fiscal controls. So, I mean, as part of your procedures, is finance going to have a threshold in which certain amounts you guys have to approve first? Or are you going to just monitor it after the purchases? Can you talk a little bit about that process?
Yeah. So we're, so we're kind of working through that right now. We probably have a limit of the cards that is low enough to sort of prevent people from using the cards for, for purchases that would need prior approval of. But certainly, as, as part of our, our manual, we'll establish some, some limits in terms of what folks need prior approval for and at what level. And, you know, from, you know, and, you know, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll start by probably just issuing cards to executive staff, to, to each of the, maybe a card to each of the departments. So, you know, certainly executive staff will be responsible for monitoring the, the card's use. And then above a certain threshold, you know, a preapproval will need to come from finance department and even from the CEO. Although I, I think we'll have the limits set at a low enough level that it'd be not, probably not really necessary for CEO prior approval of purchases. Those, those would be, so those purchases that are significant enough that require that level of approval would probably need to be done on our, you know, centrally held card in, in the finance department.
Hey, any, Vice President Haynes?
So I, I already raised my, my concerns about cards having had personal knowledge of how they can be used and abused. And I realize that it's a small organization. And so let me just tell you that I'm still a little concerned because, Nick, what you've said is very general. I mean, it's specific, but it's general. It's like, how many cards? What is the threshold? And, and let me just say, even if the threshold was $1,000, which doesn't seem much for the organization, in the scheme of, in the scheme of things, I guess my sensitivity is you can, you can get from here, round trip to New York on $1,000. Somebody can come back. And, and it's not, it truly is not a lot of money, but the newspaper article that then speaks of the misuse and abuse doesn't talk about the $1,000 threshold. It talks about the abuse of the card, somebody going to New York, round trip without authorization. So, and I realize that that is probably sort of ridiculous, although I have, I have actually seen the, the misuse and abuse. And so the, so I would like to make certain that there are policies, written policies and practices, or policies at least, on, at, at what level do the cards, how many cards are out there, at what level? And at what level for each of those individuals, is there a limit? And then the other piece that would be extremely important for me is I, the generality of oversight is also problematic. Is it going to be an oversight that you look at this every week? Is it going to be an oversight that you look at every two weeks? Is it an oversight that you look at every month? And then the, the thing that you said about there being a certain level where, where the staff that have, have the authority to use must come back and get an approval? I want to know what that, I think it's important to know what that level is. And I'll, and, and you're talking to somebody who gets very frustrated when, when I put in my reimbursement request to Los Rios. They don't care who you are, including the chancellor, who the story was told, they sent back, they made him pay for $7.50 on a credit card that was not allocated or they didn't see fit. And they've, and they've done, they want, and so the other piece of this is when those, when those reimbursements or when those amounts come in, really having the justification for doing what it is that you're doing. Because this is the stuff that gets in the newspapers and we, we've had enough stories in the newspapers already. It'll just be one more, one more nail into CalBright. So I realize that we have to do business, but it seems to me that what you also will need to do for, at least for me, for, and maybe my colleagues will agree, having those policies presented to us so that we know exactly what the expectations are for the use of the credit cards.
Yeah. So just, and answering just a couple of questions real quick and maybe a, a suggestion. So, you know, the, the cards, and, and this is pretty standard, the, the cards will have to be reconciled monthly. So there will need to be, and it's currently the, the case with the foundation cards that they are reconciled monthly and there is a, a couple of levels of review of, of the expenditures on those cards. And, you know, if, if there are unallowable expense expenditures on those cards, you know, we do, we do invoice people for, for, the foundation does invoice people for those expenses and, and we would continue that. A suggestion that we, that we, you know, might consider is, you know, just for now, issuing one card, having that card be held by the finance department, you know, and operate that way while we, while we build out, you know, and, and maybe take back to the board some, some additional details on, you know, specifically or, or, you know, specific authorized numbers of cards and, you know, specific authorized expenditure limits and things like that.
So, so my only, my only response to that is that's great. It would also be helpful to know, when you, when you say the department, when you say department heads, that could be HR, it's going to be our CEO, it's going to be, it's going to be finance, it's going to be procurement of some sort. It would be helpful to, and you probably have this in your head, to make certain that, that, that card is, those cards are limited by some data that supports that there is a need for that particular unit, the department, to have a card. Because there are these elements in the work that they do or in the travel that they take or, or the procurements that they make that would justify them holding a card. So that's the only other thing I would add to that.
President Minin?
Yeah, I was just going to say one thing. I, I don't feel strongly about it going one way or the other, but the one thing I would say about the benefit of having an initial set of cards divisionally distributed is it allows for tracking for our reconciliation purposes better also. So I, I absolutely agree with you, Pam, in terms of, you know, likely before we would issue any card, we would have, we would have in place not only the written policies and practices, but some level of training associated with individuals around the rights and responsibilities associated with that. So that people fully understood, you know, what pieces they were accountable for. But the, the centrally held card versus the, the multiple cards, both are for efficiency, but also for tracking purposes from an accountability perspective. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm happy to take it in either direction for the next month until the, the policies are formally brought back to the board. Since this, these feel like at the AP level, probably is an informational item. But I just sort of wanted to mention that the, the original reason that we landed on the, the individual cards in this kind of way was to allow for that as well, that tracking as well.
And I appreciate that. I'm not opposed to the cards. I'm, I'm supportive of all of the.
Yeah, the policies around it.
Relative to them.
Agreed.
But it doesn't think, seem like it's a matter of great urgency since nobody's going anywhere in the next month anyhow. So that, it seems like we could afford to do that. So is there any, any other board comments? Vice President Haynes, do you want to make a motion?
No. Somebody else. I will support it, but I'm not making the motion on it.
Well, I wanted to make sure we, we reflected your, your recommendation.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it. I'll, I'll, I'll second it. I don't want to move it though.
I'll move approval of this agenda item.
And I will second, thank you.
Oh, but what, we're not making any?
Make a substitute motion, Tom, to really.
Yes, yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Um, I would make a motion that the item can go forward contingent upon development of policies and training associated with it that is either delegated to our president and vice president for their review or comes back to the board as an informational item.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Or, I don't know if we want to delegate it to.
Oh, yeah.
Or if we want it to come back to the executive committee. I defer to my colleagues and their preference. I'm just channeling you, Pam. I'm just channeling you, Pam. Tell us.
No, I guess I would recommend the, just having it come back to the president and vice president. I think we can trust staff to put this together, and then we can report out at the next meeting what it is, and provide it to everyone, but hate to have a second item on it.
I agree.
Okay.
I would make that motion.
Great, so we have that motion, it's, was it seconded? I can't remember. I know, you, this is, yeah, Vice President Haynes, second, okay. Please call a roll.
Hildy Garde, Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolena Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, item 3.3, the employer contribution to health and welfare.
All right, thank you.
Tom, I just want to note for 3.2, there wasn't any public comment as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, let's call out, did anyone, does anyone have any public comment on item 3.2?
No, there's no public.
Okay, thank you. So now, we're to item 3.3.
Sure, thank you. So, we're requesting adoption of resolution 20-2020-03 to increase the employer contribution for employee health and welfare benefits from $9,840 to $12,840 annually. At the last board meeting, the board approved our health and welfare plans for our employees, and adopted the resolution stating that Calbright will contribute up to $9,840 annual towards employee health, dental, and vision premiums. That contribution level was, set that level to ensure all employees had access to at least one health plan with premiums that would be uncovered entirely by Calbright. However, upon further analysis and employee feedback, we've determined that this contribution level is low compared to what other community college districts offer their employees. It's further exacerbated by the relatively high premiums that Calbright is subject due to our small size. As a result, we're recommending to increase the employer contribution to $12,840. This will cost Calbright approximately $315,000 annually for existing employees, and that's really only $50,000 more than the level, than the $9,840 level. I'll also just comment that, you know, on the list of contracts, you know, we've got a contract there that we've just initiated with a firm that is going to be doing a comprehensive review of Calbright's pay and developing salary schedules for us that are appropriately benchmarked to other comparator institutions. Part of that will be certainly looking at the benefits that Calbright offers relative to other colleges, so that will be ongoing as well, and, you know, we'll have further opportunities to benchmark this and consider it in the future. That, I'd like to see if anyone has any questions.
I, of course, do now, which is, so when you say that you're comparing it to other community college districts, can you be specific about which community college district you're comparing the employer contribution against?
So, you know, in doing this comparison, it's been, you know, we haven't, as I said, we're in the process of engaging a firm to do a comprehensive salary and benefit study for us, so this is, you know, an ad hoc comparison, but, you know, we've been using, you know, input provided by our broker, and also looking at other community college districts, you know, in Southern California, in the Bay Area, small districts like, you know, Lake Tahoe up north of Sacramento, we kind of looked at, we looked at Los Rios, I think we looked at one in the Bay Area, I think we looked at LA City College as well. So, you know, a handful of colleges, and there is a wide range, but, you know, and I think I shared with the board, you know, last month, that, you know, the $9,840 was definitely, you know, low relative to other colleges. You know, the $12,840 is still low relative to other colleges, but it certainly gets us a bit closer to what most others that we have seen, or that, you know, Keenan has shared with us, are offering.
Nick, I have the same question that trustee Costa did, I'm just interested in seeing more analysis. I mean, if this analysis was based on what Keenan is telling you, employee feedback, as well as all of the other community college districts, we just need to trust but verify the information that we're getting, and I'm not sure I have enough confidence around whatever analysis was taken to make a decision on increasing these benefits by 30%, if not more.
Yeah, so, as I said, you know, we haven't done a comprehensive salary and benefit study, we haven't identified the right benchmarks or the comparator institutions. You know, we're kind of reacting to, you know, the analysis we've done, and the feedback that we've gotten so far.
Sorry, the one thing I would add, which has been a complicating factor, which certainly is true for this next, this next year that we're in, and that's sort of a one-year period in which we're seeking this approval, and that is that because we find ourselves, as Nick mentioned, in a smaller employer pool, what was a little bit more unanticipated was the individual impact and the variability from an equity perspective of employees within the organization. And so, I think the, when we are at full staffing capacity, which we hope to be a year from now, we would likely be eligible for a different benefit pool that we would see reducing costs, both for the college and also for the individual employee premium. So, this is a hard one to figure out in the timeframe we have to figure it out in for this next year.
Yeah, I was muted, go ahead, please.
I know. So, I have a couple of questions, Nick. So, Keenan is pretty well-established as a consultant relative to this. So, that lower amount, did they sort of acquiesce, did they agree to that amount? Or was this something that we didn't take to them relative to, before we brought it before the board the last time? That's one question.
Yeah, so, relative to Keenan, you know, through the process of identifying our plans and establishing our limits, we were getting information from them in terms of what the range was, you know, in terms of, you know, what, and there is, you know, a range, for sure, somewhat broad range, and there are different ways, different colleges do it, some, you know, what we're proposing is a fixed cap, so some colleges have a fixed cap, others have a floating cap, others do a share of cost, a percentage, and we kind of, you know, explored all of those, all of those different options, you know, before, before, you know, setting what, you know, setting, you know, rates the way we did, you know, that, what we proposed, what we proposed last month, you know, and what we proposed this month is, I mean, it's always going to be, you know, a little bit subjective, and it's always going to be a balance of, you know, what's the right level relative to what you're offering on the compensation, on the salaries and wages side, and so that's, and what might be, you know, fair to employees while at the same time, you know, giving the college the maximum flexibility and ability to control its own costs. So, you know, we felt like a cap level that would, you know, fund, you know, last month, you know, we said at a rate that would, you know, ensure everyone had access to at least the, you know, one, you know, one plan would kind of, this increase kind of moves it up to like the next tier of Kaiser Plan, folks could afford without submitting, or without having to pay a share of cost. So, that's kind of where we benchmarked that. And then, again, going back and looking at, you know, some of those comparison districts that we've got data on, and, you know, getting, you know, comparing to what Keenan has told us in terms of where other districts are.
So, let me just make this observation, I would not like to hold this, I really believe that, one, we need to vote on it, and the reason, there are a couple of reasons why, because we would still be operating under, if we hold it and wait at another, even another meeting, we're getting ready to hire faculty. And that amount, that $8,000, will turn people away. People, they go into the field, they're looking at what their salary is, and what the benefit package is, and this is a real, right now, we're at a very small group of folks, and each one of them, and I think that's one of the considerations, hopefully, we'll get bigger, and therefore, we'll have a larger employee base, because right now, it's almost individually-based. And so, I would hate to hold this up at a key time when we're trying to bring on staff, when we already know that that amount is way too low. And what I would encourage, what I would encourage staff to do, i.e., right now, that's you, Nick, oh, and then the other reason for that is, the huge cost that we are, and I shouldn't say it that way, the cost that we are incurring relative, and I realize, I understand why, but to the extent that we can move our operations outside of the foundation, that's really an important element. And if we hold too many things, and wait till the next month, or the following month, that will also extend that particular contract with the foundation. And I really want, I think it's really important for Calbright as an entity to be doing its own operations. We need to be doing them right, but it's really important, and we've had a tremendous amount of delays over time, and I'm not arguing that they needed to be, because, one, the board needed to understand what was going on, but on this particular one, there is a move to bring that amount up. And what I think we, I know what I'm hearing, but I also know how I feel, you just need to make certain that, at the end of this year, or when we move to make changes to that benefit package, that we really understand the analysis, what took place, and the understanding of where that analysis came from, and what the options are relative to it, so that we are, because that's y'all's job. That's y'all's job, but you really need to make certain that the board is on, understands what those issues and those impacts are and were, before we say a yay or a nay to it. But I am willing to support this.
Hey, Tom, can I just, Pam, I agree with what you've said, I think that, you know, first of all, I would not want to hold up our benefits for our Calbright employees. And as we ramp up hiring, I think Pam raises a really good point, this is clearly something that people look at when they're considering changing jobs, or starting new jobs. The only thing I would say also to Pam's point about, clearly, this is an evolving issue, as we have more employees, our rates are going to change substantially. Unfortunately, the resolution is rather open-ended. It says that it's effective, you know, basically, for the next fiscal year, and I'm assuming that we would be revisiting this issue. And so, I don't know if we want to just either through motion, or in the resolution itself, you know, quantify that, you know, we're going to be coming back as more information becomes available on this particular item, because, you know, it's a little bit of a cart and a horse sort of thing, which is, I have to take at face value that the analysis is appropriate, but that's it, we've locked in the base amount from here on out. So, if it's wrong, we're locked into that amount. But, you know, given where we are in the fiscal year, and the fact that I don't want our employees, you know, not to have an employer contribution to their benefits, I think we have to go with it, but to Pam's point, I think we need to revisit it with more detailed
Yes, and definitely, I can assure you that we will have that.
Okay, are there any other board comments? Any public comments?
No, there's no public comments.
Okay, so, Member Aguinaldo?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute, can I ask another question? The issue of our comparable community college district has come up in so many different conversations, in so many different contexts, and I'm afraid that we don't have a baseline of information that can guide all of these discussions. I don't want to blame our vendors for not providing us the information and the analysis to the level that we're expecting every time, but at some point during this process, we need to get some certainty and clarity around what we are using as comparables, whether it's for faculty salaries, whether it's for health benefits, et cetera. So, I don't know if it should be part of this motion or otherwise, but we need to get clarity around that information, because we are making a ton of decisions around comparables.
I would love to address that, and thank you, Hildy. I think that's correct, and we have a strong desire internally to get to a more systemized version of that, and so, the retention of McKnight is affirmed to help us develop coherence, more coherence around the salary schedules, the comprehensiveness of benefits associated with total compensation, and also to ask this first-order question to get both internally our own team, but also the board comfortable with the selection of comparable benchmark institutions. And so, we will be coming back to the board even before those are finalized, to ensure that that process is inclusive of input from the board, and opinions from the board about the treatment of who we've suggested as comps. And so, you know, hopefully, that will provide us a level of accurate benchmarking that can be consistent across all the decisions the board is asked to make going forward, particularly ones that relate to HR and employment approvals.
Can I ask a technical question? And I think I sort of know the answer to this, but I may not, which is, Gina, I heard you say earlier, an issue of equity, which I certainly understand, if we have a flat rate amount, that impacts our employees much differently, depending on what their salary is, but with a pretty wide range of salaries. Is there a reason why we wouldn't take a tiered approach that takes into consideration the overall salary?
No, I don't think there is. I think there's like a lot of steps before we come to a conclusion on what methodology is best, and I also think that in the context of the inequity in terms of the benefits that I'm, or the sort of differential impact, rather than inequity, may be the wrong word, it has also to do with family type, so individuals versus individuals with care responsibilities and dependents. And so, I think before we come up with a recommendation on that for the upcoming fiscal year, not this fiscal year, I think that's part of a set of options we need to consider.
So, if you'll stick, I think Amy asked an important question, and if you will stick a pin in that, because for the most part, at least within community colleges, it's a straight amount comparison, regardless of whether you're making $300,000 as a CEO, chancellor, or whether you are sort of a chancellor, or whether you are, um, sort of a line staff working in financial aid. And maybe that's an, it's an equity issue, and it's certainly an issue that, um, um, our, our labor partners, uh, and constituency groups wanna make certain that, one, there's enough money, but that, that that tier doesn't, that it's as flat as it can be, but then also, um, doesn't sort of overly benefit management versus rank and file kind of thing. Um, but those are all kinds of questions that really, um, you know, staff needs to be prepared to answer. The, the other thing is, and I don't know that we did have this, um, and I'll just, I'll use, I, I continue to use Los Rios, but I do know other, other colleges. When these kinds of issues come, usually sitting in the audience would be the consultant Keenan. That, that may have some, may have some technical, um, responses to some of our questions. Um, and so that's the other, that's the other piece that, um, was, was, um, has been missing on occasion of not having that technical expertise. Having the consultant who's making some of these and who's done some of this analysis, making some of the recommendations to, to, um, to the college, um, not being there to answer technical questions. We might wanna revisit that the next time.
Yeah, that's absolutely gonna be necessary in the salary discussion.
Okay, anything else? Do we have a motion?
I'll move a provolone on this one.
Second? Any seconds? Nobody wants to second the motion?
Hildy, I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, please call a roll.
Build a guard, Aguinaldo?
Aye.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
I'm gonna abstain, uh, because while I don't think there's any conflict of interest for me, there's an extremely remote possibility there's an appearance of conflict of interest. So I, I am going to abstain. And if the motion carries, I'd prefer Pam's name to be on the resolution rather than mine.
Thank you. Um, and Pam Haynes?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Jalina, did you vote?
My name was not called.
Yes, I thought so.
I am so sorry. Jalina Grande, I'm sorry. I missed, missed, uh, overlooked your name.
I'm utterly forgettable and that is okay.
No, you are not.
That's not true.
That is not true. How do you vote, Grande?
I will vote aye.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to the last item, uh, the information agenda. Mr. Schweitzer, you're back on stage.
Yeah, thank you. And I think I've got a slide deck for this one. If, um, Ms. Cruz or Ms. Washington could bring that up. Suppose I can, I can start providing some context while they are working on, on bringing that up. Oh, there it is. Thank you. So yeah, so this is our, um, third quarter, uh, fiscal year 2020, third quarter financial update, and then our, our draft, uh, 2020, 21, uh, budget presentation. Um, this is, uh, certainly the, the third quarter financial update is, is a little bit late. Apologize for that, although, um, and, and, and the budget, uh, the draft budget presentation is a little bit late as well. Um, ordinarily, we'd be doing this, um, in the previous month. However, the chancellor issued an executive order giving all colleges in the system uh, an additional month to prepare these reports and to prepare its, its, our budget due to the, the COVID-19 crisis. So, uh, the first slide is the, just, uh, you know, uh, is the fiscal year 2020 budget. This is the slide you've seen numerous times. It's just for, uh, you know, just to remind folks of, of what that budget was. And I'll, you know, walk through some of those, those specifics on the next slide, and some of the changes. So, um, so we currently have 46 staff onboard. Um, of course, that's, that's well below the, the 95 that was, you know, included in the budget that was, um, adopted for, for this year. Um, and, you know, that, that was a relatively high level of, of staffing. Um, I think, um, that was included just to make sure that, you know, whatever level of staffing that we were able to achieve in our, in our first year would be, would be achieved. Um, of course, we're, we're continuing to proceed with, with, with hires. President Tal Walker-Mendon mentioned in her report, um, that we are on track for hiring, uh, seven faculty positions and to bring those to the board in July. And those will, those will, uh, at, you know, those alone will add another million dollars in, in expenditures for, for next year. And there'll be, you know, additional hiring that will occur next year. Um, of course, as, as I've mentioned to you all, like, a, a couple of times in these presentations, our, our expenditures for consultants are continuing to, to be high. And that's just because, you know, the, the need for professional expertise as, as we continue to stand up our, our programs. One thing to note that's, that's included in, in our cost for, for the current year is that, um, we use some excess capacity in our, our lending library to, to loan to several rural colleges and their students, over 1,000 computer and, and Wi-Fi devices um, to help with distance learning, um, do, you know, that they needed due to the COVID-19 crisis. And, but we'll be expecting to get those back, uh, uh, late summer, early fall um, for, as, as we start ramping up our own enrollments. Then we also leverage a, a contract that we have with Well Connect to provide students in these colleges some, um, counseling and, and mental health care from, from licensed clinicians around the state. Um, that was, uh, provide that, you know, through a, a short window. So we'll have capacity in that contract here in late summer um, for, for our own enrollment as that, as that grows. And then there's also, as you know, um, a delay in identifying office, permanent office space in, in Oakland, Sacramento, Southern California, and the Central Valley. And in fact, we're, we're actually, we've, we're pulled out of our WeWork space in, in Oakland. Um, we made the, the last payment on, on that, um, last month. And we'll be pulling out of our space in, in Los Angeles, uh, by the end of July. But we will, you know, we, we do need, um, uh, permanent facilities. Uh, we'll be working with our, our real estate agent, um, to look at temporary space, um, in a few months. And eventually a, a permanent space. Um, and we're, we're hoping the, the delay, um, will allow us, you know, there's, there's certainly been quite a bit of real estate market volatility recently. So we're hoping that the delay will help us acquire, um, these sites at, at, at lower cost. We could go to the next slide, the one-time, one-time assumptions. So, um, you know, spending has been delayed on terms of the, the one-time funding. Although, you know, we're, we are starting to spend some of this money um, that the, the contract for the marketing firm, um, at the board executed a few months ago. Um, we've begun incurring costs from, from that contract. And, and we're looking to, um, ramp up, um, our marketing efforts here pretty soon to, uh, as, as we seek, uh, an additional, or additional enrollments, uh, through the summer. Um, and then, um, we also have, have started spending money to, or we've spent money to implement our, our customer relationship system. And work continues, uh, on that to, to incrementally improve that. And then, um, our enterprise resource planning system, which includes the student information system and financial systems, um, will begin, uh, incurring implementation, implementation costs for that, um, really starting next month. So going to the, the slide, just, just showing the numbers. Um, as you guys, um, can see on the annual funding, we're, we're about 15 million in, in expenditures out of the, the annual funding pot. So, um, you know, that's obviously lower than, than the, than the 20 million provided. Um, but we are, you know, as I mentioned, expenditures are, are accelerating out of that pot. If we can go to the slide on the one-time funding pot. So, um, very, very little expenditures out of that pot to date. But as you will see when we get to our budget plans for next year, uh, we do have, um, uh, significant expenditures that, um, that we're looking at for, uh, incurring out of that pot of money. Then the next few slides I wanna go to through that, um, you know, I shared, um, with all of you that the last time I, I, I did a, a presentation on the budget development process, um, it's just to, so remind folks of what our, our future statutory deadlines are and what the, what the goals of, of Calbright College were set out in the legislation. So I'm just gonna, you know, walk through those pretty quickly. Um, so in terms of statutory deadlines, I think the main, the main one that, that will drive costs and that you'll see money set aside for is, is the developing additional program pathways. We've got, um, three additional pathways that, uh, we need to have developed by July 1, 2021. And then another 10, uh, developed by July 1, 2023. Then going to additional statutory goals of Calbright, just walking through these again really quickly. Um, certainly to, to organize our newly development programs, lead to, to pathways at traditional colleges, identify shortcomings in student experience, uh, for underserved and, uh, unserved and underserved students, and develop technological and program act solutions to address those gaps. Redesigning transcripts, um, supplemental, supplementing registered apprenticeship programs, developing, um, a research and development unit.
Nick, I don't think you need to read the slides. I mean, I think we, we've seen these before and we've seen them, you know, for this meeting. So let's, let's roll into the substance.
Right, let's go to the 20 million annual funding. Actually, in fact, I'll roll through the 20 million annual funding uses as well. Um, you've all seen that. So going to the, the fiscal year, uh, 2021 budget annual funding, great. So yeah, so this, this is the meat of it. So, um, you know, we've, we've done some revision of our hiring plans and we're anticipating a 25 additional staff, uh, will be hired in 2020, 21. Um, that includes faculty positions, including the establishment of the research and development unit. We will, we're, you know, and with that increase in staffing, we'll, we'll project a reduction in, in the need for consultants. And so less expenditures in consultants. Although there will be, you know, we've built in some significant additional money for consultants just because we are, you know, continuing to, you know, stand up and evolve programs and, and looking at the, 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 the next wave of, of, um, of, um, programs and student supports and things like that, that we need to, that we need to build. So we'll, we'll continue to need, uh, professional support in, in those areas. And then although, you know, we've delayed, um, you know, looking for a, a permanent headquarters, I have, we have set aside 7 million for possible tenant improvement costs for the end of, um, the next fiscal year. Um, or included that in, in the budget and then set aside in our reserve an additional 8 million, uh, for the out years, um, facilities costs for, for, um, locations in Sacramento, uh, Southern California and the Central Valley. And moving to the, the one-time funding uses slide. Um, again, this, these, these are, um, we've gone through these before. I have added on each of these, um, some, some additional information. Um, and I won't go through each one of these, but we added the, when, when we would expect to, you know, expend money towards each of the, the purposes that the, the statute laid out for the, the one-time uses. So folks can, can see that and see how that's, that's getting factored into our budget planning. So then going on to the fiscal year 2021 budget, one-time funding slide. Um, so here's where, where we're kind of starting to set aside some significant money out of the one-time pot. I would set aside, um, 5 million to, to seed a statewide workforce exchange partnership. And that's bringing in, you know, economic development agencies, um, America's Job Centers, which are those, those, um, uh, they used to be called one-stop, uh, sites. Uh, they're funded through the Rioa, uh, program. Um, the strong regional, um, uh, the strong work, workforce, regional and sector partners that's funded, uh, through the community college chancellor's office. And of course, uh, community colleges and employers. We set aside 3 million to, you know, start developing those additional program pathways and also, uh, start building out our, our student supports. Then 10 million, um, to work in partnerships with, uh, with other community colleges to, um, develop, um, online competency-based education pathways. Another 10 million in, for partnerships with place-based agencies like community colleges, libraries, those American Job Centers I talked about before, and perhaps our, our own facilities, um, that, as, as well. And, uh, one thing to mention on, on each one of these is that we are already in, in discussion with various potential partners um, to start, um, building those, those, those partnerships. Then the, the 5 million for student, 5 million for student outreach. Um, I mentioned on, on the earlier side, the, the marketing, uh, firm contract that we're starting to spend from, you know, will also work with, uh, labor organizations, community-based organizations, employment intermediaries for, on, on student outreach and to, to reach those unserved and underserved populations and, and bring them in so that we can, we can connect them to, uh, to the workforce. And then, um, 4 million, and this is to, you know, continue implementation of our enterprise resource planning system. And then also to begin development on adaptive learning, simulated experience and student support technologies. So we can go to the, the budget slide. Uh, yeah, the fiscal year 2021 draft budget. So I, you know, point out a couple of things on this. So first of all, with the annual funding, um, apologize, there is one small error. Um, this, um, the amount that we've put on there for operating expenses, I think it's, it's on the slide as 4 million. It, it should actually be 6 million. Um, that is still relatively high. As, as I mentioned earlier, um, you know, we've, we've built in, it is, you know, it's still relatively high. It's lower than what we were projecting to spend this year, though. We did expect, build in some extra costs for consultants in, in that line that we expect to, um, come down over time. come down over time. We also, in terms of the salaries and particularly for the academic salaries, you know, a lot of the positions we've built in, we built in a on a partial year basis because we expect it will take some some time to hire them. So over time, those those numbers will increase. So, you know, in in future years, you should see an increase, particularly in the academic salaries line and and a decrease in the ongoing expense or the operating expenses line. The other thing I'll point out is that the total expenses of twenty-seven million is is higher than what the governor projected for us or provide for us in his May revision of seventeen million. Part of that is the one-time capital outlay cost that for that would put in the budget for potential build out of of an Oakland headquarters. It also represents the, you know, the the higher spending on for the operating costs and the consultants. And as I said, we we expect that to come down in future years and so that we we will be balanced to the seventeen million. We do obviously have carryover that we can we can spend and that that we can help us, you know, contribute to, you know, the costs of those those additional consultants. So that we're doing that next year. The other thing I point out to that on that slide is the the expenditures of the one-time money. As you can see, we had, you know, it is a significant saying aside for that. The last thing I'll point out is, you know, of course, we are all still waiting to hear on what what is included for Calbright in in the state budget. So, you know, all these numbers might might very well change and I might might have a very pick, a different picture to to show you next month when I when I bring you a tentative budget for approval. However, you know, certainly, you know, if if there's a change in the annual funding, it will probably look at those operating expenses. They are, they can be varied. So we can probably look at those in terms of bringing those down a little. And then on on the one-time funding, we can take a look at, you know, what what we want to prioritize there. But, you know, in terms of if we lose some one-time funding, it'll probably more affect what we do over the next several years as opposed to, you know, what we do next year. So I just walked through kind of what some of the things that we're we're currently working on in terms of use of that one-time funding over the next few years. So certainly, you know, we want to, you know, continuing, continue to to leverage, you know, the current public infrastructure around employment development and continue to to work on filling those gaps between employment development agencies and and the the job centers and, you know, the strong workforce partners and community colleges and employers. And 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 both both for our own students to have access to your employment and employment support through those, you know, other public agencies and but also system-wide to to help strengthen the workforce development system, system-wide. The second, the next bullet is, you know, essentially, you know, essentially what I just said, continue to to support the workforce development system throughout the system. Workforce development throughout the system, you know, particularly in the area of career pathways for for the students that that we are created to serve, those low, low-wage workers, unemployed and unemployed, underemployed individuals. Why integrate resources across multiple funding streams? Focus on workforce education and training. So this is something we we want to work on is looking at other sources of funding beyond what the state provides us, including apportionment funding, also categorical funds, potential federal funding, any sources of funding that we can we can bring in to support our students and our our programs and and the system overall. We want to work on accelerating development of skills-based credentials that are aligned to labor market needs and maximize their their portability across colleges. Provide a more seamless journey for folks to move from pre-employment to training to reemployment. So, and this is really looking at a lot of the folks that are are currently, you know, gone onto unemployment insurance and, you know, how can we connect with them? You know, you know, provide access to our programs and and provide access to to reemployment. Then developing collaborations with with state agencies and other partners again to 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 support unemployed and strengthen the pathways for for upskilling, reskilling up training. And then, you know, build out our instructional technologies, you know, to, you know, better, better, you know, for for both, you know, connecting, better connecting students with the workforce, but also certainly in our own programs and pathways or instructional programs and and the supports that that we provide students. You know, we're going to work on a lot of part of the establishing the R and D unit is to start a program where we are rapidly designing, developing and testing pilots to refine our approach to student learning and support and and connecting folks with with the workforce. And, you know, again, in support of that, establish virtual and mobile labs to support those those pilots and those efforts. And then really focusing on student-centered experience and supports for 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 our students and and, you know, especially providing training to our staff, professional development and and building out mobile integration and and other methods of 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 reaching students. So with that, I know I went through a lot of stuff really quickly. You know, I'm happy to go back to any slide and and repeat anything if if folks would like or happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Nick. Board member questions?
I have a question.
Can I defer to Amy? I have questions on the budget. A couple editorial comments and then a question, which is, one, I'm really happy that at the top of this meeting, we talked about faculty hiring actually coming before the board. It is such an essential component here for anything that we hope to do. And Calbright is the backbone of anything that we'll do. And my hope really is, is that once we've gone through this first tranche and have created our our process for faculty hiring, that we can really accelerate that in the budget year, especially in light of creating additional pathways and refining what we've begun. My second editorial comment is, I feel like there's been a lot of misinformation. I always envisioned that Calbright would be completely online. And, you know, this is just, I guess, a comment for comments. It is, the model has always contemplated that there would be some physical locations to provide student supports and services. And most of us are eyes wide open on, you know, some of the challenges of a completely online environment. And throughout the community college system, some of us have had to deal with that because of COVID-19. And so I'm happy to see that we're beginning to to plan for that because I think it's essential, especially for certain students, to really have that in-person connection. My question is, and I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I really do view student outreach and marketing as very different things. And so in our budget system, we lump them together. And I really believe we should have a separate budget ward for student outreach. Although the the audience is the same, the function of them is quite different. And I think especially in light of the students that we are, our mission is to serve. Student outreach isn't just social media and TV ads. And of course, I'm also going to pitch for that it should be an ongoing expenditure. I think it's critically important based on our student demographics and candidly coming out of this recession, whenever that may be. And during the recession, it's going to be absolutely essential that we are have robust student outreach, using our partners in the community, using a variety of methods. So my question is, is of the five million, that includes marketing and student outreach, how much is dedicated specifically to traditional student outreach?
So, so our, you know, we we have a $1.7 million contract with with Census that should run through most of the year. So that that would be the the money that's, you know, dedicated or, you know, the more marketing and and social media part of that. You know, it'd probably be a little bit higher because, as I said, it it runs through most of the year. So we'll probably need to renew that and, you know, there'll be a little bit, the expenditures will be a little bit higher, but not by much. So that that would really be what what we've built in for the marketing and and the rest would be more focused on on working with those partners to do what you would consider to be more traditional outreach.
Vice President. Oh, and the Vice President Haynes?
So I'm, I'm, I I agree with, I agree with with Amy. But I do want to add this caveat, having spent the last eighteen months as a Board of Governors member on the African-American advisory panel. What I have, what what has been told to us, both by parents as well as former students and prospective high school students as well as those who are in, who are actually in the system. And I, and I think I understand the difference between outreach and marketing. What I have said is the traditional community college has done sort of a D minus relative to students of color, in particular African-American students, relative to both of those, the outreach and the marketing to them. And I would say that generally across the board. And so I think, but I will agree with Amy that there really needs to be a budget for that that's ongoing and that that really recognizes that there are different populations relative to Calbright that we're trying to serve. And and those messages, which I guess is the marketing piece, but maybe may overlap to the outreach piece, has to be discreet relative to those populations. Because it was, it was an eye-opener even for me relative to the discernment of both high school students and those who were nineteen to twenty-four, their discernment of different messages to them. And they called out sort of all of the, all of the things that we sometimes take for granted. The voiceover, is it a white person talking to them or is it a black person trying to talk to them? They heard those those differentiations. Were the messages authentic to those groups, to those groups of of prospective former students as well as current students? And the authenticity of it? And and there was a, and there was a diverse perspective. And so what I have, what I have appreciated about Calbright is, is their messaging, are there visuals? Are there sort of authentic voices from populations that we're trying to serve? I think that really needs to to continue relative to whether that's marketing or whether that's outreach, I'm not quite sure at this point. But but they do, those those voices, the authenticity of those voices, the visuals of those really come home to me. And then I have spoken to others, including family members, where they have said the same thing. So I would, it would be helpful for me as a board member, who that's not my bailiwick, to understand what the differences are that are, what the differences are between outreach and what the differences are with regard to marketing and where is there an overlap with this population? But I really think that, and and you are, Amy is right. What we also heard, what we've heard is, and we've heard it currently with regard to COVID. What they, what students of color and particular African-American students, because I can speak to that, are missing is that face-to-face interaction with with faculty. And it's been very interesting to hear their concerns. They could get to a faculty member face-to-face and and the faculty member could appear to be really not authentic, but really sympathetic to challenges that a student may have. Some of that is missing within this virtual where it appears that the same, the same instructor is not as sympathetic relative to the to the to the students. And so the blending of the two. But I do also want to caution that that for, there there are populations where it will be difficult to get to. I mean, right now, it is difficult to travel two and a half hours in some remote portions, the Central Valley, to get to classes or an hour and a half to get to classes. And so this online or the work requirements that's relative because it's not traditional hours. So we need to also keep in mind who are, who our populations are as we design it because we have to design it with them in mind relative to this online component and and what we're asking them to do in terms of coming in to a facility. And where that, does it have to be the college or can it be some makeshift place someplace else? But that's, that's just my comment.
Hey, thanks. Any anyone else?
Tom, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Nick, you mentioned that we might in the future look to apportionment and categoricals. What would our apportionment be if we were to estimate it based only on the non-credit enrollments that we've had to date?
It's would be really minimal. So so there are a couple of things that that will need to sort of play play in there. First of all, so we are, and I know, you know, the chancellor's office has started to think about this, but how, how, you know, we don't really have a system in place for, you know, reporting FTS and claiming apportionment funding for competency-based education. So they, so they need to do some work to to figure that out. You know, once, so, you know, and and we've already, you know, we've been engaging them on that. So how they determine that will will sort of, you know, will matter a bit in terms of, you know, what what number of students that we need to reach in order for apportionment funding to be, you know, a significant source of revenue. It will probably be, you know, more in the the range of thousands of students as opposed to hundreds where we're at now. So so there, you know, there'll be this, you know, looking at apportionment funding is something that's going to happen probably more in in the out years than, you know, certainly in the coming year.
Would it be appropriate for us to preface almost all of this budget on some of the factors that we will have to contemplate, not only in this budget cycle that we're currently in, but budget cycles going forward, to caution potential readers or reviewers of this content that all of this is certainly subject to change with a little bit of notice, but that we are cognizant of the fact that we probably will not in perpetuity end up with a line item in the state budget and that we will need to transition over to apportionment and categorical funding at some point in time?
Yeah, so that 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 is a good point. It's, you know, I know other other members of the board or or President Tal Walker-Mannan may be able to comment on what what the, you know, original deal was when the legislature started appropriating the the twenty million annually. I've heard different opinions from different folks on that. But yes, certainly. as we grow that 20 million, whether it, we keep it or not, you know, should become a, a, a smaller portion of our, of our overall funding as we begin to rely on, on other funding sources for, for our financial support.
Thank you, Nick.
The comment I'll make is this, you know, there's no way that it would have ever been contemplated that a $20 million annual mark on a going-forward basis would sustain tens of thousands of students as, as the, you know, sort of fully operational contemplation of CalBright, you know, at its origination. And so, you know, I think that the question as to what the source of funding is that supports increased scaled enrollments is, we're, we're treating with a level of respect and understanding about the current constraints on apportionment funding as we think about additional sources and other sources that ensure that there is, you know, supported revenue coming into the institution to support increased numbers of students, which won't really trigger in the initial few years that we see ahead of us, but I think was absolutely contemplated as a part of, you know, that, beyond that seven-year ramp-up window that we had under the original legislation. So, you know, to sort of answer your question, I think, I think, yes, there's not a condition of scale under which it does not assume that we need to have a revenue source associated with this that is likely some combination of state funds and/or federal or private funds. But the makeup of that, I think, absolutely changes with the current budget conditions as well as how they, the budget of the state and the economy recovers in the coming years. So I think we're trying to be really mindful of all those factors in designing the way in which we might scale the organization.
Tom, can I have a real comment and then a question? Jolena made me think of a question. Um, one, just for me, I will say, I, I agree in principle, constitutional authority always lies with the legislature to appropriate at any time and that includes an ongoing funding source. Every year, they have the constitutional authority to do, you know, in the budget what they will. They're the only appropriators. So, um, you know, and we're seeing this year kind of all of the decisions that come along with a bad economy for the state. I do think, you know, for me, this is a public institution. So, you know, the, the thought of private funding would be something as a board, I think we'd really need to discuss in depth. You know, the, I'm, I'm not totally against it, but I think it would really depend on what it was. But what Jolena made me think about is more the uncertainty around this budget year, 2021, in which unlike previous, more recent state budgets, but certainly within my memory, I assume there will be many budget bill juniors or basically adjustments to the budget going forward predicated on things like new revenue, the Department of Finance, whether we get federal funding. So can you speak to kind of what is our process going to be like on the budget? Because I think it's probably a moving target at this point. So it's kind of outside of the normal statutory framework that districts look at their budgets.
Yeah, so, and I, so I mentioned earlier in the presentation that the, the chancellor had signed an executive order that had really given every college across the system more, more time to develop its, their budget. So we, we have a, you know, under the new timeline, next month, we would ask you to adopt a tentative budget. And then, then there would be a, a final budget would be, need to be adopted in September. So, and, and we'd need to have a, have a public hearing on that final budget before that date, so probably August. So you'll be, you'll be seeing budget items every month for the next few months. And then after the final budget is adopted, if, if things, you know, based on whatever triggers get put in, in, in the bill and what, who's tied to what trigger, you know, we may need to come back and request budget revisions from, from you, you know, in, in the months following that. Of course, we, you know, regardless, we will be, you know, providing quarterly financial updates to all of you and, you know, and, you know, circumstances could change at, at CalBright, you know, you know, that, that are not maybe driven by the, the state budget that, that we may, you know, come back and, you know, want to request a, a budget revision from, from you anyway. It's, it's a fairly common occurrence in, in districts that, you know, they, they come back period, periodically throughout the year to request revisions from, from their governing boards.
Hey, thanks. Are there any other board comments? I understand we have some public comment.
We do. Mr. Kalu Maggi, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can I be heard?
You can.
Okay. Good afternoon, President Epstein, Vice President Haynes and members of the board. My name is Eric Kalu Maggi and I am the president of the Community College Association, the community college affiliate of the California Teachers Association. While it certainly has been an unusual year, the, the anticipated 2019-20 actuals are so dramatically different from the original 2019-20 budget as to cause concern. I encourage the board to request information as to how the 2020-21 budget is expected to better describe actual expenses. Budgets are required by the state as a formalized planning document. And while they are rarely exactly mirrors of their budget year, they express intent and expectations and lose value if not used. One document that may well be helpful is the actual CalBright budget. This is probably a 50 to 100-page document, usually available on college websites, that outlines each budget category. It clearly exists for CalBright. For example, there is a very precise $3,230,792 proposed in academic salaries, but I do not recall last year's budget ever being available at the CalBright website. I encourage you to direct the release of the complete CalBright budget when you approve the tentative budget in the upcoming months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalu Maggi. Are there any other public comments?
No, that's the only one.
So in light of what he just said, if there is something we're not posting that we should be posting, let's please make sure we do that. Any other comments before we complete this agenda item? Okay, next item is public forum. Do we have anybody who's signed up for the public forum?
No, I don't have any public forum.
Okay. Well, before we adjourn, we could be facing a very interesting landscape in four weeks when we, we reconvene. Hopefully, we'll, we'll be forging ahead strongly and to fulfill our mission. And we look forward to seeing you all in a month. Thank you.